Conclusion of the pledge, if we could all do a moment of silence, retired Trenton firefighter, James Levy passed away, just about two weeks ago here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by our nation under God and indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alrighty, call this meeting order at seven oh six P M. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Von Crooks, Benedetti, Cameron.
Present.
Here. Cruzie.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rosetta.
Here.
For him, present Mayor Rosetta.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could we get a motion to excuse Councilwoman Von Crooks?
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Next item we have on the agenda is the minute approval of the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
Move to approve?
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Alright, next up, we've got under presentations and proclamations, like to welcome our county commissioner, Joe Palmera here. If you'd like, want to come to the microphone here. He's got good news for us, which we are always excited for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, members of the council, administration. A good year between the city of Trenton and Wayne County just got a lot better last week, as I'm sure most of you know, because a lot of you have been advocating for a long time. We received some real strong, passionate, and urgent communications to get money approved to demolition the Trenton Riverside Hospital. Finally, last week, one point five million was approved. I couldn't be happier. That is in addition to, two months ago, fifty-three thousand getting approved for Lexington Park, and I, from the Wayne County Parks Village, and I, and I have to say, if anybody is ever, like, we try to do this on rotation between communities, Trenton is always ready with, with a project. In case somebody just slips a little bit, all I have to do is call the mayor, and within two days, the Wayne County has a nice proposal, and I think this one might have got in like that one. So we appreciate it, and you've probably noticed, a lot of nice things are going on over at Elizabeth Park. I love the new signage. The Marine Dock is now being rebuilt. That was in bad need of repairs. But I, but I have to say, as good as it's been, we still have work to do on an, on a tough issue for Downriver, and one that comes up next Monday, and that's, there is a hearing over in Riverview on the landfill expansion. Like you, I have been adamantly opposed to expanding that landfill. I have publicly stated, I don't know where in the United States of America, they're trying to tear up a golf course and expand a landfill. I don't think that's happening anywhere, and I don't think should be happening anywhere. And I also believe an overwhelming majority of the public believes that way, but the Facility Inclusion Committee is going to have another hearing. This thing's been going on for five years, and I can only hope and pray that they will continue to not approve the expansion of the landfill. Once again, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all of you, members of the council. It's great working with you, and let's, let's just stay on top of what's going on over there next week. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and I, I just, yeah, I want to say thank you again on behalf of all of us, really, for how, how much your extra emphasis and nudging that along through the executive's office and helping us out there. It was, it's been a long slog to get it done, and we're excited that it's, the most excited I've ever been, and that definitely made my Thursday, when that got appropriated and all squared away. So I think we've already seen more activity because of that with the project, and definitely even more to come over the next couple of weeks. So thanks for being such a good part of that and a great advocate for Trenton.
Thank you. I'm glad to, and I also have to say, Dean Creach did a marvelous job coming twice before the county commission and advocating, and there were some tough questions he had to answer, and, and he handled that hot seat rather well, and I was just, I'm just thrilled that it's finally approved. So, for everybody in Trenton and all of Wayne County. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Yeah, so we can clap, that's fine. Slowly but surely, so you don't have to stick around, Commissioner, don't worry, we won't hold it against you.
I don't know.
Does anyone else have anything by chance, or?
I do.
Should zip Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Topic. Yeah. I just want to say thank you so much for you and the rest of the Wayne County Commissioners writing the letter in regards to the twenty nineteen auto no-fault reform. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Alright, anyone else? Nope. Alright, we'll move right on along here. Next item we've got is a public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment, we have reserved exclusively for agenda items. There'll be another opportunity for public comment at the conclusion of the meeting, but as said, anyone wishing to speak, on the Zoom function uses the raise hand feature found under either reactions or participants, depending on the software we're using, we'll give folks a second to get queued up there if they have it, and go to those in person first. As said, anyone wishing to speak begins with their name and address, directs all questions through me, and limits their comments to five minutes. See if we have any hands. Seeing any? Right on along here. Next item we have would be moving down to the thirty-third District Court Case Flow Assistance Funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, with Councilwoman Von Crooks being absent. I'll defer to our court alternate, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved, moved to receive and place on file the caseload assistance fund from the state of Michigan for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, submitted by the thirty-third District Court, showing the city of Trenton receiving one thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and four cents.
Support. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilman. Next up, we have from our city administrator, D C C and D M A membership dues, Mr. Creach.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you have two invoices, these are routine, these are unchanged from last year. One is for D C C membership dues in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents, and the other one is for D M A dues. That's the mutual aid component of the D C C in the amount nineteen thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, sir. Next up, under groups and organizations, I'll let you take this, Madam Clerk, we have the Trenton Lions Club Annual Candy Cane Sale.
Okay, thank you. The Trenton Lions Club is looking for permission to conduct their annual candy cane sale in the city of Trenton on Friday, from Friday, November eighteenth through Wednesday, November thirtieth, excluding Sundays, and this would be under the direction of the police department.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. I'll let you take the next one, too, here, the proposed twenty twenty-three council meeting schedule.
Alright, before you, you have the proposed schedule for the twenty twenty-three council meetings, and this would show the meetings all being the first and third Monday of the month, except for in January. Both meetings would be on a Tuesday because of New Year's, and also Martin Luther King Day, and then in February, President's Day would move to Tuesday. Again, in June, for June nineteenth, we'd move that meeting to Tuesday, and then Labor Day would be, in September, would be moved to Tuesday.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I wrote to Debbie that the January third meeting is during the schools' Christmas break, holiday break, so I will not be able to attend. If anyone else will be out of town that day, perhaps we can think about it later and also change that date, but, you know, I'll sacrifice and not be here, that's fine, but, you know, just wondering how many people that would affect because of the schools.
Yeah, if there's anyone that has conflicts now that we know about, we can get that moved, but if not, I mean, I'm fine with assessing a little closer, too, just in case. I know holiday travel plans are changing and all that good stuff, but unless anyone else has anything strong. Alright, any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered, but we'll keep tabs on that for sure. Alright, next up, city engineer, Dean, do you want to take this, the resolution here? Petition to divide property at two, three, two, two, three, one, Third Street.
Yes, sir, this is before the council, once again, there was a small typo, we needed to be exact, it was just a change in the amount of feet involved in the division, so ask for your support again on this.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Alright, next up, we have, well, from our DPS director, we should head up there, yep, feel free, request to conduct a water leak detection survey. Some more insights on that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just before I get into this, I'd just like to take just a quick minute to introduce myself. Again, I'm Bruce Hammond. I worked for the C E Rains Company. I've been there for the past nine years. Prior to that, I worked for the city of Flat Rock for twenty-seven years as the Director of Public Service, and retired from there, and went on to a second career with Rains. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in public administration, so as you can tell by my experience, education, I'm not an engineer, but I do work, um, we do have a municipal division, and primarily, my job is to help cities with projects like this, grants, and asset management plans, and whatever may came along at the city, and the Director of Public Service or the engineering department needs help with. So with that, I will, we'll go, move on to the request that Kevin Sargent has put, placed in front of you tonight. He is asking for, to do a leak detection survey of the city's water system. You have approximately eighty miles of pipe in the system, and prior to this, this proposal, there was a couple of periods that they had noticed through their, what they call their Whammer system. It's a G L W A system where they can monitor the pressure in the city, pressures and flows in the city at all times, and they noticed a rapid increase in flow in the system, which means all of a sudden that there, it's way above average, so there's a leak somewhere. So they went out and they looked, and I know they found a couple leaks that he has mentioned. They had leaked for a long time. They have been, since been repaired, and it, it looks like the, the, the flow has dropped closer to normal now. Him and I discussed it some more, and we decided both, we both came to the conclusion that leak survey would be good to go through the entire system, because it hasn't been really done before, and anybody, anybody could remember, see if there's any other leaks in the system. The, the advantage to doing this is, if you do find leaks and you do repair them, you save money, and you're going to basically get on the, the, the cost of this proposal, you get a return on investment. So we felt that to be good, and also, if we go through the system and we really don't find anything, we can safely say that the system is tight, it's not leaking, it's not causing any problems or any of what could be water loss in the future, because it's kind of a combination of two things. Water loss is a combination of actually having a leak in the system, and then all the meters that are part that measure the water, the retail water that the customers are buying. Meters over time slow down, they break, they stop, they get less accurate, and so that's a slow process that happens, and if we go through this, and we say, okay, the water system's fine, but we were still looking at it as though that it appears that we're having some water loss, meaning we're purchasing way more than our customers are buying. There's always a gap between the two. The question is, how big the gap is? The national standard is fifteen percent loss. If you're under fifteen percent, you consider that your system is doing really well. If you go with twenty, thirty percent, your system is not doing very well, you're actually really losing money. So with that, we decided to check the water system, do the, kind of, that's kind of a little more easier hanging, low-hanging fruit than venturing into replacing water meters right away, and we find the system's tight, and that's great. If we find some leaks, that'll stop some, the losses and the losses in revenue for the city. As for the proposal that we got, we got it for Miles Leak Detection. I know them, Miles, from a recent leak detection survey that we participated, paid it in with the facility at Allen Park. They had a similar, similar experience to what Trenton had. All of a sudden, their water, water that they're buying from G L W A jumped way up, and they're experiencing thirty, forty percent loss. So they asked me if I knew anybody. I didn't know at the time. I knew some people, but I, I talked to some other people in the business, and they gave me Miles Leak Detection, and they were, they were pleased with what the job that they did. Miles came to Allen Park, they did a survey for them, and they found a twelve-inch water main that was right next to a creek, had a hole in the bottom of it about that big, and you couldn't tell it was leaking because the water was going straight down into the creek. You could walk, you could walk by it, walk by it, walk by it, and never tell, but they found it for them. It was leaking approximately a million gallons a day, so they were losing quite a bit of money, and they repaired it, and things dropped back down to normal. They had six watering breaks that were undetected. Some are going into storm sewers, some were, you know, like this one was going into a creek, so they brought their water loss down quite a bit. So, and based on some of those things, and their proposal that they do, they do a thorough job, they did a thorough job for Allen Park, they were responsive, and plus, he has, right now, he has a good time and is scheduled to do this for the city of Trenton, so basically, based on all that, Kevin and I would like to recommend that you approve their proposal for eight thousand four hundred dollars.
So moved, or support, whichever.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, I guess. Also, my question is, if we haven't done this in a while that anyone knows of, now it says in your note that we would be doing this every other year, we should, so has there been discussion about adding this to, as a budgeted item every other year, or accumulating, you know, some money to do that going forward?
I haven't had a real discussion with Kevin about that. I would recommend that you do do that. Because, like I say, if you find one leak, you probably will pay for the, the, what you, for the proposal, so.
I don't, this is an important thing. I just want to make sure that maybe we don't forget about this.
Oh, yeah.
From now on, so it's been established that we're going to now do this every other year.
Oh, yeah, we can definitely do that, because we definitely want to keep up on it. It's very important.
Yeah. That's it, thank you.
Any further discussion, Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I just have a couple of questions. So I was reading in section three F in regards to the survey hours, and then in doing my research in regards to Miles Leak Detection Company, it stated that for the city of Framingham, they actually performed the work between ten P M. and six A M. So is that what we're looking at right now in regards to, like, traffic noise and all that stuff? Do we know exactly what the hours are going to be? So we can prepare the community?
Yeah, it was my, my experience with Allen Park, they did everything during, during the normal working hours of the, the D P W department. Now, if there might be some reason that they might want to go out one evening and listen to something where you're right, when it's quiet, when there's no traffic or something like that, they can't, they have a hard time pinpointing it, they might say, okay, we're going to go out on Thursday night on this street, and so we notify the police and everybody that they'll be out there doing that.
And would that be during phase two?
Yes.
Okay. And also, too, in regards to the warranty, I believe it's number six.
Yep.
Is that usually the basic in regards to, like, the thirty-day framework?
Hmm.
If they come back?
Yes.
Specifically for cities that have never had it done before? Do they ever extend that warranty for the first round?
That I don't know. I think they would be flexible with it. With the thirty days. I mean, I don't think they come back in a hundred and eighty, but, you know, if it's like forty days.
Yeah, I'd like to see some.
Because they're, you know, they're in the business. I mean, they're going to be helpful because they want to do it the next time, so I'm sure they'll, they'll cooperate if we need something.
Well, thank you. That's all. Thank you. Appreciate you answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Alright, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, Bruce. Alright, next up, we have a couple late items here. The first from our city controller, the twenty twenty-two Police and Fire Actuarial Valuation. Alright, Madam Controller, feel free, take it away.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. So before you, I have the valuation for twenty twenty-two. The pension fund valuation provides the annual required contribution for the city, that the amount we must fund. This has gone up a hundred and twenty-one thousand this year, and our new actuary, Kavanaugh McDonald, will be at the next pension board meeting on November sixteenth at ten thirty in the morning, and they would like to invite council to come to answer any questions you might have, and I'm looking to have this received and placed on file, please.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next time you come, though, it has to only be about to report, like, increases in the valuation, so.
That was last year. We got lucky last year.
Remember, for next year.
Thank you.
Very much, Karen. Alright, next up, we have another late item from our Parks and Recreation Director Marina Contract Extension Changes, Mr. Beaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is a slight wording change to the contract that has originated back in early spring, I believe, is when the last time we brought this forth. There has been some wording changes in here, pretty nominal changes, just looking for council's approval on behalf of.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion, Councilman Cruzie?
I don't want to assume anything, but has legal looked at this document?
It has been sent to legal.
Okay, and they said?
And I honestly, if I would, we could put that in there if you'd like, but there was nothing sent back to me that there was any issues. So Alan, I sent it to Anthony this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, wastewater treatment plant superintendent chlorine emergency valve actuator shut-off system control panel halogen duplex model two. Mister O'Day, you got it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
I definitely know what that is, so.
Yeah, it's a word. It's basically a remote shut-off valve system for our chlorine disinfection system. It allows for the valves to shut off if the situation becomes an emergency with the chlorine leak. Also, monthly, we do safety checks on this system, so it allows for our operators to hit a button remotely, and these valves shut, and then we can verify that the system works properly. So when we were investigating the roof leak, but I was up here last time, we investigated some of the electronics in that building, and sure enough, the circuit boards inside this control panel were corroded, which is a concern. So I entertained repairing it with this company, and they do not support this anymore since it's fifteen years old. So looking at our asset management schedule of items, this control panel was scheduled to be replaced next year, so we got a quote from the halogen company. It's in the amount of seventy-eight hundred dollars and twenty-five cents to replace this. Basically, it's an in-kind replacement. It'll go right in with their technician will install it and start it up for us. So that is what I'm asking for tonight, is for approval for this control panel.
So moved is written as seventy-eight twenty-five.
Motion, do we have support, that movement supported, Councilman Cruzie?
Yes. Upon reviewing the worn-out product, is there any way we can do a better job of protecting that, or that's just normal wear and tear that happens, and have we decided if we're going to budget that, if that's the case?
Um, yeah, this is, generally, electronics last in our industry ten to fifteen years, so this item is about fifteen years old, and it is up to be replaced on the asset management plan next year.
Okay.
So actually, next year, I'll be up here for our other system, for our sulfur dioxide, replacing another control panel. It's exactly like this one for that other system, since we have two altogether.
And it's historically, they run about ten to fifteen. So at what point do you tend to put it on the list to be replaced?
Ten years is a good estimate for life of that equipment, and like I said, the availability of the internal components, they do not make that anymore, so it's a new model. It's kind of phased out, like, lots of electronics, they phase it out after about five to ten years. So, and this item does have a three-year warranty, and we also send in the actuators that it controls. They go out for an annual service maintenance. And we also send in the actuators that it controls. They go out for an annual service um maintenance check. So the components of the system do have an annual service contract as well, where we send out the items to get inspected and recertified for our system.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Well, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered. So thank you very much, John.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Next up, we go to our disbursements and statements and then our reports. And for all that, I will defer to our mayor pro time, Councilwoman Pate.
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve the authorized disbursements of November seventh, twenty twenty-two in the amount of one million, one hundred five thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-six cents.
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discussion seeing unanimously so ordered?
And I'd also like to move to approve the city beautiful commission minutes of October sixth, twenty twenty-two. The civic commission minutes of October third, twenty twenty-two, cultural commission minutes of September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Recreation commi- commission minutes of September twentieth, twenty twenty-two. The traffic safety commission minutes, September seventh of twenty twenty-two. And and also October fifth of twenty twenty-two. And the retirement healthcare benefit plan board meeting, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two minutes and October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two draft minutes.
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Our, thank you very much. All right, we'll go to other council business now. I just had a couple relatively quick items here. Um, we discussed a couple of them already, but uh first thing I have um wanted to, uh, I know it was about two or three meetings ago when um Mr. Larry Mills had the question about the tracks on King Road. Um, between Dean and Councilwoman Pate. Um, it was uh a lot of back and forth and discussions, but um but long story short is that DTE is going to be removing those tracks. It looks like it won't be unfortunately until um early next spring. Um, however, we did, uh, it does look like that's getting resolved and that'll be a little smoother ride down King Road because of it. So want to give uh thank yous to them because of that. Um, additionally, um, as Commissioner Paul Merritt mentioned too, next Monday, uh, November fourteenth. At one o'clock PM is the Wayne County Facility Inclusion Committee meeting um to uh decide the fate of the proposed expansion of the Riverview landfill. Um, there is a Zoom option as well that uh for those that are unable to attend in person. Um, that information is on the city website, Facebook page. Um, and you could, you know, contact my office too if you need more information about it. Um, but the in-person um meeting will be again next Monday at one PM. That's November fourteenth at Arnoldo's in Riverview. Um, for the uh consideration of the expansion of the Riverview landfill. Um, I know this body unanimously passed a resolution uh opposing that. I sent a letter in. I know some other folks did as well, but would encourage folks certainly to uh make their voices heard about that. Uh, want to give a congratulations as well to the Trenton High School football team on their district championship and their win last Friday over Carlson. I'm not actually sure when the last uh one was, but I think it was almost twenty years or roughly around then. So uh best of luck to them in their game this coming Friday against Mason. Um, and then lastly, the good news I get to report um that we already discussed again a little bit, but I am uh much less frustrated about getting to talk about it was uh the Wayne County Commission did uh approve that one point five million dollars to go towards the River uh Riverside Hospital demolition. Um, that is money that uh while is being used for demolition now, um in the long run, does come back to the city of Trenton um as part of our TIF capture uh to put the property back uh on the tax rolls to its fullest extent. Um, that will be beneficial to us. So um and I know uh actually Dean, if you don't mind giving an update just on, I know that uh sorry to put you on the spot, but they had uh begun the process for some of their permitting um and soil erosion and things like that too, to indicate that the the ball should be rolling here pretty profoundly. And they've had folks on site already doing some remediation.
Right. So uh they they are on site. You'll see activity over there uh pretty much uh daily. They're doing asbestos uh remediation. Uh, I think there's probably some mold and stuff too they're dealing with. And they're they're gonna work their way down. I think they're on the fifth floor as of the other day. And then uh they'll pump the basement out of the uh remaining uh water. Out of there and we're trying to get um more activity, uh getting the the fuel tanks pulled. And um there'll be some soil remediation, of course, that has to uh go with that because of the diesel that we know is is on the site. Uh, at least to some degree. And then uh we we also at the same time expect uh these uh soil erosion uh permits and demolition permits to be pulled in the in the coming days um on the outside, maybe may might be a couple of weeks, but um very, very soon. And um and then the then the actual demolition will will occur after the site is completely prepped and ready to go.
Thank you very much. So yes, slowly but surely, but progress nonetheless. Um, and then last, I just remind folks again to go vote tomorrow. So polls open uh from seven AM to eight PM. If you have not already done so, or uh come drop off your absentee ballots. So other than that, that's all for me tonight. And uh this evening, we start with Councilman Cabot.
Oh, wow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good, good evening, everybody. Um, nice to be back. Had to miss the last meeting, so my apologies on that. Um, just a couple of things. Uh, again, congratulations to THS Football and their big win uh last weekend and good luck next week with Mason. Uh, look forward to celebrating another victory. So uh go team. Um, also, um, October twenty-eighth was National First Responders Day. Just like to wish all of our first responders out there, um, you know, a big thank you and uh happy National First Responders Day and uh thank you for all you do. Um, and other than that, please go vote tomorrow. Um, exercise your right. You've earned it. Please exercise it. Other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Well, I would just like to remind everyone that the post four twenty-six in Trenton is still collecting for Toys for Tots, which started October first and goes all the way through uh December. I'm not sure exactly what the cutoff date is in December. Also want to remind everyone that Santa will be there um at the fire station, December fourth. And I would also like to acknowledge um Marissa Shuey. I don't know if I'm pronouncing her name correctly. But she represented the girls varsity cross-country um competition at the States. Uh, LP Division Two finals. She was sixty-fourth overall finish and she did twenty minutes. And actually, she was ahead one minute plus from her previous time. So I just wanted to give her an acknowledgement and congratulate her on that. And that's basically, that's all I have. And congratulations to uh football team.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman Benedetti.
Yeah, first off, yes, congratulations to the football team. Glad to see they're doing, they're doing well this year. Um, and that's good to see with the new coaching staff and everything there. Um, also like to thank the police department. It was nice to see them out so much on Halloween, riding around and interacting with the kids and stopping and talking to people. And I think that's a great thing. It makes people feel comfortable when they're out. I will say we had a great turnout this year, which I think the weather helped. But uh besides that, I have nothing else, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Pete.
Thank you. I just want to um congratulate our neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods and the entire city of Trenton for the uh building that will be coming down formerly, hopefully known as Riverside Hospital. And um I'm sure we will be celebrating. We have a progressive dinner in December and it would be great to uh maybe give us each a commemorative brick if possible. That might be fun. And uh whatever else we decide to celebrate, we will let you know. Um, also want to uh mention that Mayor, you are out of town and Dean made me get up really early in the morning on Saturday.
What?
I can assure you, I was up.
I'm not sure, but it was the best time. This is, I'm gonna give kudos to Relief Michigan, the DTE Foundation, Kevin Sargent, Holly Krosick, Russ Foster, uh, the DPS staff, uh, Sam Sonic, NHS students, Trenton uh high school hockey, Trenton Mission gardeners, uh including Debbie Barnes, who is on a mission now uh again, and watch out for her. Um, the city beautiful commission. Uh, neighbors, actual homeowners and volunteers that came out to plant twenty trees in the newer street uh that we're gonna call Arthur's Court. There's some new homes without any trees there and every home got one tree. And uh the amount of people that were there and the 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 education that we got from the arborist, especially his name is Marvin. He was incredible and had the whole, like all of our attention, all fifty of us attention at this one tree of how to plant it. And so Debbie is gonna have him come back and do some uh education for the community uh about how to plant trees and how to take care of them and uh just what a great morning, great weather. And um those residents I think will feel a little bit more at home now that they have trees in their neighborhood. So congrats to them. Uh, let's see. I also uh want to thank Donna who's here uh from the library that helped host a uh Great Lakes Way um kind of workshop to get residents feelings and thoughts about what they would like the waterfront to look like and the future of our city. Uh, there will be another meeting on November nineteenth. That's a Saturday. I believe it starts at ten AM. I have handouts for you that I grabbed, some extra ones. So if anybody would like these, I have a bunch of them. You can take. Um, there's also QR codes to do the questionnaires. And also uh they have a website that shows some of their preliminary plans. And this is the group of students, uh, they're graduate students from the university's uh Toddman Engineering Design School uh that are working on this project for us. And they're learning a lot and, you know, trying to help us um see a vision for the future. So please join us on November nineteenth as well. Uh, yes, and I want to thank uh Council, that, thank you for reminding me. I want to thank Councilperson Rodriguez for attending on Wednesday night. Appreciate it. I don't think so. I think they were trying to do some community involvement and this is the second class that's doing it because we had a class in the summer. And this is the fall class, which most likely will be ending in December. So I think they're gonna be wrapping up that project by December. Yeah, yep, thank you. Uh, let's see. Um, also like to uh tell you that the football game is actually at home this Friday. And uh the the against Mason for the football game. So um everybody here gets a chance to attend and root the the team on, including the band who will be there still playing. And my son's excited. He's like, Mom, if the football team wins, the band keeps playing. So he's excited too. And I think uh the whole community is. So uh wish them lots of luck. And I think that's it. I'm probably forgetting something as usual, but um I think that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Oh, yes, thank you. I just want to thank Debbie and her crew in advance for everything that they will be experiencing tomorrow and hope everything goes smoothly and uh e- everyone go vote. That's it. That's all. Thank you, Wendy.
There we go. All right. Councilman Prue.
Yes, uh, it's been mentioned by numerous persons on on this bench here, but I would like to thank the the police officers for their um rounding during Halloween. It was nice to see them out, as Rick has indicated. I also like to thank the football team for their success, along with their uh uh coaching staff, uh their support team. And people uh always overlook the cheerleading squad. They're part of the team. Uh, as Wendy's already mentioned, uh, the band, my grandson's in the band, so he's still out there playing. So it's a full team effort, even though it's the players that come out with the end result. And good luck to them. And uh again, uh Debbie, um, good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Like everybody else has said, just go out and vote. That's your um right and have at it and don't get caught up in the minutia that's out there.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. All right, we will go to our other elected officials now. And Madam Clerk, we'll start with you.
All right, thank you. I'd like to just mention the next regular council meeting is Monday, November twenty-first at seven PM. And everybody already mentioned voting's tomorrow. Polls open seven AM to eight PM. And that will be it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go to our assessor, Ms. Barnett.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything to report tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Our treasurer, Mr. McCullough.
Hi, Mayor Council. Uh, not much, uh, other than I'd like to remind everybody that we do have uh the TEF, the Trenton Education Foundation, has a fundraiser. Their annual uh event uh is called the Signature Event. It's a blast for the future. And we recognize excellence in education uh in our in our system. Anyways, like to invite everybody to attend that on Friday, November eighteenth. Also, another invitation, like to extend to Mayor and Council uh to really, to anybody really, to attend our meeting for the fire and police uh pension. We'll be there to welcome Larry Langer with uh our new actuary Kavanaugh McDonald. He'll be giving a presentation on the actuary report that uh council received and placed on file today. Uh, if you've, if you can't make it, Council Mayor, uh, please submit uh questions that you might have uh to myself or to Karen Saul. And we'll we'll be happy to forward them along, but uh you're all uh welcome. And while it's not the most interesting thing, Larry Langer uh will will make it an interesting uh proposal. It'll be a a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, when is that meeting again?
Uh, when is that meeting? Mike, we had a question from Councilor.
Yeah, Wednesday, November sixteenth. Uh, that'll be, uh, starts at ten thirty in the morning. We're gonna try to move uh Larry up in the agenda. So I'll be close to eleven, uh, ten forty-five or so, something like that.
Great. I'll just jot that down. So, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alrighty. Next up, we'll go to our uh department heads. Do we have any department heads wishing to speak? Go to those in person first, then on the Zoom. Mr. Beaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just make this quick. Uh, tomorrow we have our winter programming launch for the Parks and Recreation Department. So please come on down to the Westfield Center. Check out all the new and wonderful programs will be running throughout the winter between five thirty and six thirty PM. Look to see, look to see everyone there.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any of our other department heads wishing to speak? All right, not seeing any on the Zoom. We'll now go to public comment. I would ask that anyone wishing to speak. Um, if you're using Zoom, please use the raise hand uh function found other either either under participants or reactions, depending on your uh computer you're using. Uh, we'd ask that you begin with your name and address. Do you limit your comment to five minutes and that you direct all questions through me? We'll go to folks in person first, then see if there's any hands on the Zoom. Seeing any? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered for adjournment at seven forty-eight PM. So reminder, go vote tomorrow and see you all in two weeks.